Good evening and welcome to the continuation of the April 23, 2025 zoning Board of Appeals being conducted on May 28, 2025. Roll call, Georgia.
Here.
Derek.
Here.
Anthony.
Here.
And Brad is here. We have a quorum and all members of the Board are present. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Anthony Graebars, I make a motion to remove from the table the application of Michael J. Lewis for a practical difficulty located at 34 Arundel Road, Gray Main, and reopen the public hearing on the same matter.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? This is a public hearing for Michael J. Lewis, who has requested a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the street ordinance to reduce a 10-foot required setback down to zero feet to install a driveway assessing the rear of their parcel located on property at 34 Arundel Road, great tax map, 024312-031-000 in the Lake Zoning District.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Did you want to approve the minutes?
Yeah, that's what I was just...
You don't have to.
Can we wait until we're actually done with the April 23 minute?
That would...
Or we could do them in part.
Whatever you want is fine.
Okay, we'll hold off on that until we do the public hearing and address what we've got. We'll do that under old business. Reopening the public hearing on this matter, does anybody have anything they'd like to address the zoning Board of Appeals with concerning this application? Yes. Would you please step up to the podium and identify yourself for the general public?
Fran Roder, 34 Arundel Road. Things that I did not mention the last time, and since it's been reopened, I was not aware of what was happening to 34 Arundel Road. To 34 Arundel Road, everyone in the neighborhood, people in the neighborhood, I received notices, and I had not received anything at all. It was Mr. and Mrs. Duffus who contacted me to inform me what was happening and for me to be present at the last hearing. So that has put a little... I've been concerned about that because, you know, it was a big surprise, a very big surprise. And then last time, the time you visited the properties, 34 and 32 Arundel Road, I couldn't make the track because I'm disabled. So that was... And I kept looking around, and I kept thinking, something is missing, something is missing. And finally, I went home. I haven't slept since this whole deal, by the way, so I'm really very upset about this whole thing, this whole matter. And finally, I went home, and I'm like, the boulders. There were boulders right on where you went up to the property, and they disappeared. And part of my property is actually halfway onto his, and those boulders disappeared too. And so I don't know what I need to do to get the boulders back because at this point, I could probably use it to make a little wall to protect from the water coming into my backyard, but also the boulders to be put back onto my side of that property because it is a retaining wall. That was served as a retaining wall. Just like on my property, you saw those boulders, they are not there for decorations, they are there to retain the earth. So that's two issues that I'm concerned about. I will be contacting, and I started contacting a lot of people because, you know, there is a house... I don't feel... We came back to Maine to have peace and quiet, to live in the middle of the woods. My husband fell in love with the cabin masters, he fell in love with Northwood Law, and, you know, it was like, let's go to Maine, and let's be isolated, let's really be in the middle of nowhere. So now I have a house that is going to be over my head, and suddenly I feel I'm being chased away. And so that's a big thing. I never expected that to happen. If somebody wants to build a house, let them on top of their property. You know what I mean? Let's... The other concern that I have is the fact that in the past, my house, his house, and the house on 26 Arundel Road should have not been built. It is the top of a glacier, and as I said to my neighbors, they had been issued when 26 went and built their house. They brought in heavy machinery to clear everything and so forth, they dug some of our trees after we wrote a statement not to take them down. I mean, it was just a very difficult time. And by them shaking the earth, what I've noticed, and I have pictures to show you if you want, when it rains heavily, as you notice it's very wet up there, my home water turns brown since that house has been built. It wasn't before, we had rain, and the water was fine. So now I have to have... I had to buy a water filter, and I had to buy an ice machine. Now, it wasn't big expenses, it's not a big deal, but that's what happened. And so now you're looking at, you know, if indeed you allow that house to be built, it's going to be heavy machinery, the earth is going to shake, the mountain top is going to shake, and there are environmental issues that I'm very concerned about. So those are the things, but I do need Governor... I sent something to Governor Janet Mills about the environment because she's very pro-environmental, and yet I see things that are not making sense at all. And so a lot of people are going to be informed. I need to also protect myself physically and emotionally, so I have reached out to the Office of Aging and Disability, and I'm working also with the Attorney General to see what he can do in, like, for instance, the boulders. You know, I'd like to have them back, and I'd like to have the ones put back on my side of the property because it was done for a retaining wall. So...
Mrs. Woodbury has a question for you.
Georgia Woodbury, how large were these boulders?
Oh, you know, you saw my property, right? That size.
So they'd need equipment in there to move those boulders?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you have heard it?
Well, here's what's happening. My house is, again, thanks to my husband, is super insulated, we have triple pane window. I don't hear the wind, as a matter of fact, I've had people come into my house, open the door, and suddenly the wind is blowing, and it's like, what's happening? We don't hear anything in your house. So it's super well. And also, normally, I take a walk every day with my dog. I have been homebound because within the past 10 months, I've had serious surgeries. And so I will tell you honestly, my neighbors know that, that for two and a half months, I stayed in Johnny's. I even went to the dump in Johnny's, and I did get the look, and I was like, praying that nobody calls me.
What's Johnny's... Excuse me, sorry, what's Johnny's?
Oh, the hospital gown.
Hospital gown.
Gotcha.
I know, I came out of it.
It just seems as though there have been tracks from heavy equipment moving those boulders.
Not necessarily. They came to my...
Well, your Volvo made tracks in the backyard.
Well, here's the scoop. You know my driveway? Nobody wanted to do it when we moved in because it was boulders. There were times we had to park down the road and walk it. And so I found this wonderful man, Mr. Ricky, out of Rest Brook, and he was amazing. He brought in the equipment, and within a day, the whole driveway was done. And then he came back the next day to finish it. It was amazing. He was amazing. So somebody can do that with the right equipment without leaving a trace, especially because the boulders, if you look, the driveway is paved, you know what I mean? So there was... There would have been anything at all. Yeah, yeah. But my house is super well insulated. As I say, we put everything brand new inside. I have two kitchens, not one, but two kitchens. It's a religious thing. I have everything, so it's very well insulated, and I'm very happy. But as I say, I have not walked my dog in some time because, and so that's why I was perplexed, I kept looking and looking, and finally, it's like, oh, you know, the retaining wall.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
No, Mrs. Froder, before you go? Before you go?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, I just... You presented us with a document tonight. I don't know if Mr. Lewis got a copy of it, we need to make sure that he does.
He has a copy.
Okay. I'm a little concerned. It would be an issue with me. You said that while the committee was present, I observed the rocks serving as a retaining wall had been moved. Did you tell us that at the time?
No, this is what I'm sorry. I've been so upset because of this issue.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss something.
I kept looking and looking, and I was like... I was very upset that day, and I kept telling the gentleman next to me, you know, there was something that didn't jive, and I was very, very upset. And by the time I got home, I'm like, wait a second, this was a retaining wall. How come they were able to go up? And because the boulders are gone, and as I say, even my side of that...
How were we able to get up?
Yeah, you did get up.
Oh, I tell you, we walked through the...
Yeah, exactly.
...boilies and we walked up through the woods.
Because there were no boulders. There was nothing left.
There were no boulders in the path, there were not even rocks where we moved.
No, I didn't see any impressions.
We didn't see any way that machinery could have been moved? Anyway, that's beside the point.
September and now, that place.
The other thing that I want to address is when you mentioned further my land was defaced, that you want all the rocks put back.
Well, no, just on my side.
Bear with me, please. That you don't feel safe. Those are issues that this Board does not have the authority, statutorily or by ordinance, to address, and you've said that you were going to contact the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
That would be the route to do because that's a civil matter, or it could be a criminal matter, but this Board does not have the authority to make those references or address those issues. We don't have any authority whatsoever to look at any other criminal history that you allege as being put in here.
I just wanted to...
And I just want you to know that you've provided us with this information, which is not pertinent to the application itself, and I'm not sure why you had to make that known to us.
Part of it is...
I think that you're doing what you want to do civilly, so that's good.
It's just that, as I say, you know, the house going... I mean, as I said, I feel like I'm being chased out. And that, you know, I haven't even dared to tell my husband because he wanted that house, you know, for my retirement, you know, and suddenly, it's not going to happen. And so it's a big... You know, it's, as I say, it's really upsetting to me that I can't even be in a place that we chose, you know. Two gentlemen who I went to USM with were my agents, and they wanted me to have the house, and we worked so hard, and, you know, everything is new in there, and outside and inside, and now, you know, there is a big...
Okay. Can I address something real quick?
Yes.
I just want to say, regardless of how any votes go, like, I encourage any person that would be standing there, as an American, you have every right to practice any right that you feel necessary to do what you need to do, and I encourage everyone in the room to always do the same. So I just want to appreciate your grind, regardless of the votes. I just want to say, as a human, I appreciate your grind and efforts, and do what you need to do constitutionally speaking.
Yeah, and my future is on hold, that's all.
Thank you.
It's not a good place to be.
Is there any other public comment?
I'm Elaine Duffus, I live at 2 Hayden Bay Lane, which is directly in front of 34 Arundel, across Arundel Road. It's a steep slope, and because of the intensity of the site visit, we did not feel we had the opportunity to lead you onto our property and show you the runoff streams that we've put up with in the past. Some mitigation has happened where our road association dumped the... You saw the rocks on the edge of Arundel behind our property, it's a weird shape because our property is two triangles, and we did not get to show you how not only did the erosion and the near flooding from the past two constructions that we lived through affected not only Arundel Road, but all the way down, and affected Hayden Bay Lane also, and involved the people who were waterfront, who were concerned about the drainage going further onto their property and then the lake. So it's just like in the pamphlet I was just looking at, the whole shoreline, it's a hill, and the water is going to go where the water is going to try to go, and it, no matter what you disturb... I don't begrudge anyone a house, but no matter what you disturb, whether it's vegetation or trees or the topography, that water is going to find a way. And when substantial logging was done, I don't remember how many years ago... Do you remember how many years ago on Gore Road? The road that you came down, Gore Road, over on the left-hand side, you can still barely see an inland road there where logging trucks went in, and they logged, I don't know whose land it was, I don't know how much acreage of hardwoods out of there. And that also, I mean, way, way, way down in our neighborhood, we felt the effects of that eventually. So my concern, yes, selfishly, is for our house and our property, but also for the whole... Both roads and the lake, because as I say, that water, we put up an ugly wooden barrier behind our yard, and so that the water wouldn't just come rushing towards our house. And so it went this way, on this side of our leach field, septic and leach field, and then this way, and it ended up going down the other side of our yard, under our back porch, and into our driveway. And the first construction, Mr. Getchell's first construction, which is where Fran lives now, flooded our driveway so badly that I could not use my garage. I had to park in my neighbor's across the street. It was a waterfall coming over the rock boulders that outline our driveway. When the construction began over behind us at 34, the original construction, there was a constant effort on the part of Mr. Getchell. He would bring in more dirt and more gravel and more, to try to mitigate the flow, and it would constantly rut out and keep on coming down. Now, when you just have the lovely rains like we've had lately, constant showers, not a whole lot happens. But when you have a really bad storm or a downpour, it doesn't take long at all for the water to just come rushing down. And his driveway, obviously, it's no fault of his, he did not build it. His driveway has no culvert, there's no ditches, there's... It's a conduit, the water just comes straight down. So that's our major concern. I mean, we're retired, fixed income, you know, we just want to live and let live, and we did give up two whole summers of... We had two whole summers of construction and noise and dirt, we couldn't use our screen porch, because we're in between two streets, we're at the fork in the road. And sometimes it's like, wow, we're paying these taxes, and we're... Life is not the way it should be. So I guess our... We have a sense of dread based on the intentions that we've just learned about. And I, for one, believe that if there are codes on the books and rules on the books that they should be adhered to, and when our house was built, he wanted a variance of a few feet, just so we could have an entryway on the front, no, 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 nope, not going to do that for you. And then when I came to ask about the other part of our property, like I said, it's two triangles, the smaller triangle is good for nothing, they won't let us build anything, no, you've got to have 10 feet this way, 10 feet that way, 10 feet. So you might be able to put a small shed on it. And I said, well, why would I want to walk all the way down the street to get to my shed? The triangle's down the street from the triangle that our house is built on. And so then the town decided, well, you have a half acre, so we're going to up your taxes. Well, we have a half acre, we can't even use it, that's another issue. But anyway, my point is, when you have rules for good reasons, for the protection of the community and the land and the lake, rules should be enforced. That's just... I mean, emergency variances, like, I was told if my butters had a well problem, like, suddenly their water, and they needed to go onto our funny little triangle to alleviate a problem like that, then we could have some sort of variance, or they could have a... It could be worked out because it was an emergency, and I get that. And, you know, you try to be good neighbors, and you try to all live together and get along, but things are a little more tense right now than we would prefer. So I just, like I said, I just... I feel like everyone deserves a good life and use of their property, but there are things, there are measures in place that matter and are there for a reason. So, anyway, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I would like to ask, maybe it's simplistic, but you made reference to things are a little more tense than they normally would be. What's the cause of that tenseness, in your opinion?
These two abutting neighbors. And I understand both of them are upset, and I haven't walked in either of their shoes, but it... Yeah.
I will have to say, I noticed that tenseness between the two on Wednesday night. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments to the Board concerning the application? Is there anybody else before Mrs. Froder speaks again? Anybody?
My name is Michael Lewis. I am not tense toward the neighbors. I have put forth an application for reduced setbacks to get through one specific piece of my property. I understand the concern, I understand how we've gotten here, but I do feel as though we've gone a little bit off topic. I'm not going to address all of the things that have been said. I'd like to focus on the application, you know, I'm asking for reduced setbacks through that one little part. That's why I'm here, this is the process, that's what I'm appealing for. I mean, if we... Do you guys still have this here? That I gave out at the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yes.
You do? So this is getting a little bit off topic, but I'm trying to maybe help with some of their concern. So, you know, these guys are talking about their house is down here, it's at a lower elevation, they're talking about, you know, me building up here, this water is going to, you know, cause problems for them. If I allow that to happen, I'm going to cause problems for myself. Do you see what I mean? So why would I do that? It just, it makes no sense. There are certain ways to do things, there's codes, there's all kinds of way to mitigate water. There's professionals that do nothing except mitigate water. I'm not Howard Getchell, and I'm going to do what I can, you know, Mother Nature is Mother Nature, but I'm not going to, you know, do something that is going to burden me, it makes no sense.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Froder? Step to the mic.
Instead of him building a house there, why can't you build a house here above his?
That's not our decision to make. We're addressing one item, as Mr. Lewis said.
But that would make more sense and pleasing.
It's his property, he can build the house where he wants to if he can have access to it.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, things... Anyways, that doesn't make sense.
We're not here to address where he's going to locate a house.
The other thing is, there is a beautiful house coming on the market at 51 Arundel Road. That house has already six kids.
Mrs. Froder, you're not here to be Sales of Real Estate either.
Six kids.
Mrs. Froder?
That's what I think is going to be cheaper for you. Really. It's got a huge young family.
We're not a real estate board, we're not here addressing that issue, we're addressing one issue, as Mr. Lewis said, and we're addressing your concerns and other butters' concerns. Let's keep this targeted, we are not going to wander all over the world. Mrs. Froder, that's enough.
I know.
That's enough.
Yes. Very, very upset. I'm being chased out.
Mrs. Froder, please keep your comments to yourself from this point forward, or I'll ask you to leave. Seeing no other comments for the public hearing, I declare the public hearing as closed. Now, the zoning Board has six different criteria, 1, 2, 3, 4, that we have to look at and examine, and each one of those criteria has to pass by vote of the Board. The first criteria we look at is the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general condition of the neighborhood. Mr. Lewis, could you step to the podium and address that issue, as why is this a unique
It's a unique circumstance because we need... I need to put a driveway, I mean, I need to reduce setbacks to be able to meet the town's ordinances, to be able to access the rest of my property.
In your response, you wrote, yes, the person who designed the lot didn't plan for future setbacks.
Right, I'm trying to elaborate on that a little bit. The setbacks, so that's aside, that's aside. That's 14 feet wide, the side setbacks are 15 feet, so, I mean, basically, it's a non-conforming law, in my opinion. So I think that's what dictates the unique circumstance.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, I don't know the answer to this. Do you know when those... When that lot was broken off, or...
I wanted... I believe it was 2016 is when Doug Webb... I wanted, I believe it was 2016 is when Doug Webster brokered a deal with the Finneys to get that rectangle of land and make that a legally existing lot per the Lake District, per the amount of required square feet to have a legally, legal-sized lot, from my understanding.
I'm kinda wondering how somebody could say that could be a legally conforming lot and not without a way to get to it.
Right.
Well, it's attached.
But I mean, get to it.
No, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I mean, Doug said he tried for, for a larger piece of, you know, a larger, whatever you wanna call that, path through there and not have that choke point. Mr. Finney, who's not here objecting this now, by the way, did not want to give up any more land because this was the minimum amount to pacify the Towne of Gray. And from my understanding, she did not want to give up any of that either. So, here we are.
How wide is your proposed driveway?
10 feet.
And that section of land width rate there is how many feet?
14 feet. The town ordinance states that the first 20 feet of the driveway needs to be, I think it's 14 feet or... How wide is it? Can I ask you? 14 feet. And then after that, it can go down to whatever you want it to be. I mean, I'd like it to be 10 feet in case an ambulance needs to get up there and save one of my children from choking.
Would this driveway be an extension of the existing driveway?
Yes.
So the driveway that comes into the existing house will, from what I remember on the sidewalk, move up to the right along the property line and then up the hill? Where you had the flags?
Yeah.
So there's 15 feet there now?
14, 15, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay, and you want at least a 10-foot driveway?
Yes.
Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Any wonderments?
I can see the, picture it from the walkthroughs.
Is there a motion?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general condition of the neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. The second criteria is that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Lewis, what you've written is, "I agree that this is correct." If you were to receive a variance, and we've heard from the immediate abutter, that the detrimental effect might be a water runoff that potentially could cause some type of erosion on their property. Is that something that you could mitigate?
Yes, 100%. I mean, just the natural topography of the land that we walked does not provide an argument that water would even go her direction. There is, you guys witnessed it, there's that, that, whether it's natural or leftover from her construction, that, that berm. But yes, I, I'm going to do everything I can and I will work with the neighbors, with, with the neighborhood, with the road association, with anybody that is willing to work with me to heed any concerns and help in any way that I possibly can. Uh, there are professional ways to do anything.
Thank you. I will say that from my viewpoint, when I walked the property with some of the neighbors and some of the people on the HOA, that we walked up the hill, up the proposed driveway. We walked the property line that's immediately to the rear of the Froder property. I, there's this berm, there are rocks, there were small tree growth. There was a few large trees, but not many. And we walked down the hill and we got to the bottom of the hill. And there was a berm there. Or like, and we're pawing our feet, I am anyway, pawing my feet down through the leaves, looking for moisture or looking for any type of water collection or runoff or something that just might be sitting on the surface of the leaves that might have pooled. And there had been some heavy rains. And I didn't see any water collection or means or rivlets or ruts in that berm that demonstrated water going over the top of that berm or, very honestly, even through the berm. I, I just didn't see it. And I know people thought I was crazy, but I was pawing at the ground.
He was.
Did anybody see? Did anybody that took the sidewalk see anything like that on...
Yeah, well, I was, I was walking there as well and I was at one point by myself and I was walking right down the berm line. And even in some points, the berm line was as tall as me and I'm, I'm six foot. And then at that particular moment, I, I said, "Okay, if there has to be..." 'Cause I wore my high boots up to my knees. I always said, "There has to be some sort of pooling here." And I, I even flipped, flipped up some leaves with my foot back there just to look. And, you know, I, I didn't, I agree with the chair when he says, you know, "I could not see any personally." And it was really hard for me to fathom that exact thing. Okay, in my kinda little experience, it looked like whoever built that house pushed everything back and created that berm, in my opinion. That, that's what I personally kinda thought, final thought, walkthrough was. So that berm created a lot of, uh, just, just not correct soil. You know, you had nothing to really soak anything that's coming down. It looks like there's like clay and the base material. 'Cause it looks like whoever built that house came and just scraped all the top off and left you with a nice big mini hill in the backyard. That's me getting a little bit off topic. But my point is here is, I, I didn't understand. I couldn't see, you know, when I asked, when I asked the abutter to show me the rivets of water coming down, I personally could not see it. I personally couldn't. That's really all I have to say about the sidewalk.
Does anything, anybody have anything else?
No, I, I agree with Mr. Shirley.
Is there a motion for letter B?
I make a motion, the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The third criteria is the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. That's always the most difficult question, I believe, on this. And that's why I asked the question about the separation of lots and, and, it seems like, you know, the prior owner may have been a contributor to this. But also, it seems like the prior owner wasn't fully aware or being...
I don't, Howard, Howard Getchel was the prior, I mean, I guess we'd have to, if we were, you know, like which prior owner is this application referring to, number one? But number, Howard Getchel, um, I believe was foreclosed on and at the time that this lot was donated. And that is when Doug Webster and Michael Finney worked their magic for this envelope. So at that point, Howard Getchel was not in the picture and this was a bank-owned property. And I think that that pretty handsomely answers that question.
It's a big piece of property that had no access.
So, I just wanna clarify what you said in my head.
Yeah.
So it went from Getchel Bank back to someone to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I...
Getchel lost the property.
Right, right. Yeah, the bank, yeah.
And then it was, uh, I can't remember what bank it was, but...
It doesn't matter, really.
You know, I mean, they kinda, I don't know, do they own the property? Do they hold the property? You know, I mean, what, what is the definition of...
So, at that little choke point?
Yes.
The property to, what I'm gonna call the left of it?
Yeah.
Was the bank-owned property.
Uh, it depends on if you're looking at it, you'd have to...
This is federal mortgage.
Permission to approach the bench?
Yeah.
I always wanted to say that.
Yeah, yeah. That's close enough, no.
Tackle. Where, okay, where are we talking about? Where are we asking?
At this checkpoint, who owned this property?
Uh, this gentleman right here, John Finney.
John Finney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who is not here today, um, as an abutter, you know?
Does he still own property?
All the way to Egypt, you know, the Finney Lumber and Gorum. You know, I mean, they're very, uh, they own a lot of property.
This property is Finney property?
Yes.
And this property is yours currently?
Yeah.
This one here with you?
Yes.
So you have...
But if Doug Webster was here, Doug Webster said this the last time. Doug, Doug, Doug is the one that came up with this solution, you know? Which I believe the question is directly asking. And Doug Webster did not own any of this. Doug Webster worked for the Towne of Gray. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
I mean, yes, Michael Finney owned this, but he never owned, you know, what was now my parcel and Doug Webster, who said the last time that he did this, you know? And it's in the file, you know, I mean, he, you know? Could, I'm sure that file, we could go through it, need be.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any additional questions on that one? It, it would appear to me that it's really not the result of the petitioner. And it appears that the immediate prior owner is the bank. I would make a motion that the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. Is there a second?
I second.
Anthony seconds. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna say, I got the clarification personally from just understanding the timeline of how it passed hands. Because that is important, that timeline. It's probably one of the only times when it's important. But yeah, that's kinda how I'm deciding.
All those in agreement? It's unanimous, 4-0. Criteria number D, no feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. What, what other things have you tried, Mr. Lewis?
One time, not multiple times, I have approached Fran about possibly trading, permission to approach the bench.
You can just tell us.
Uh, you know, like, we could have swapped this triangle of land here for a back parcel. We could have traded. And I would have had, you know, more of a setback here to build over here. She actually, she said that she would and then, you know, she didn't. Also, I offered to buy this off of her. I think it's pretty obvious at this point in the game, she's not going to give me an easement. And I reached out to the Finney and family and tried to pursue an easement. And I haven't heard anything back, you know? But they are not here contesting this in any way.
Okay, so now that I said no, I am gonna say, "Would you please approach the bench?"
Yeah.
I wanna make sure I know which piece of little triangle you're talking about.
So, uh, can I use a, can I use this? I just need... So, see right here? This, this piece of triangle. See how it's like 14 feet here? It's, Howard Getchel went into foreclosure because he built a house. In addition, you wanna see a picture of it?
Don't worry about that.
A big one. And that was probably what caused a lot of the problems that the abutters had. But he was over the, the property lines here. So, you know, there's not enough room, my septic's over here. But if she traded me or sold me this, um, I would not have that property line there. This would disappear and I'd be able to build right here or add on to what's currently there. But, you know...
And what piece of property were you offering to her in return?
Whatever this, if I Google Earth right now, I could calculate the square footage of that and just give her, you know, whatever from here over, just to make an easy survey.
So you would, you would take basically this piece of property and give her this piece of property?
Right.
Okay.
You know, we could trade her. Or she could have just given me any easement through there, you know? I mean, there was, yes, there was other options available, but they were not. No deal was able to be made.
Mrs. Froder, did he, would you, go to the podium here, please?
Thanks, I need to address something with Mr. Grabas.
No, I need to ask a question. We'll ask the questions and...
Okay.
Did the applicant, did Mr. Lewis offer to trade or buy land from you?
Way, way back.
Okay, so the answer is yes?
No, because...
The answer is no, he didn't offer to buy a trade.
No, no.
So he did offer to buy a trade?
No, 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 he never did that. He said, "What are you thinking about this property? I could buy it." And he was, I was walking the dog. So I was like, "Oh, yeah."
Mrs. Froder, let's not go into the past.
Okay, so, nothing, no, it is not true. But if we want to negotiate now, I'd be glad to because, Mr. Grabas, I had John Thatcher, Bryce Hamilton, and Sarah Franch, three well-coated realtors and brokers from Portland come to my house. I went to college with them. They are extremely, I mean, they are millionaires. And yes, they, it's announced to me that if this house is built, my property is going to significantly lower the resale. It's resale. So yes, you're chasing me out of my house. And that's, I have a problem with that, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, if you want to buy this...
Mrs. Froder, we're not here for that. Did Mr. Lewis offer to buy that piece of property or trade property?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I was passing by with a dog.
Thank you.
And that was it. So...
Thank you.
I offered to babysit.
Thank you. Thank you.
She did, I offered to babysit.
I just wanted to address the board and the, the people in the room. I'm the code enforcement officer for the Town of Gray. I'm actually also the interim director of planning and code enforcement. And I just wanted to let them know that, that the way that the zoning laws are structured right now, and it is important to note that the laws have changed recently. The, the state introduced a law due to affordability housing, and they're allowing for greater housing densities. So he could come to me today and apply for this building permit if he chooses not to do a driveway. And he would be granted that building permit, and it would be approved without any noticing of the public, without anything. So he is allowed to build this house whether he has this variance or not. This is just a matter of him accessing this. So due to the changes in the laws and the way that the property is, his lot can support a second dwelling unit, and he can meet all of the requirements. And what I did when I talked to him to make sure that we did leave enough of a wiggle room for his driveway is originally, he came in and he said that he was going to ask for, like, to be reduced down to two feet. I was the one that suggested zero, so that when he builds that driveway, if he does need to slope the sides or do, you know, gravel or retaining, whatever, do so that he can collect the storm water so that it doesn't drain onto his properties, he's got some room to do that. You know, because typically, say, your normal parking spot's nine feet, so you need 10 feet for a driveway. I thought, take the whole thing, it'll probably be smaller, but that way you have the room on each side of that driveway in order to be able to mitigate any water that needs to be dealt with. So I just think that's an important issue to note, because there seems to be a lot of talk around trying to prevent this house from being built. And approving or denying this is not going to have any impact on that.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't mean to put you on the spot or whatever.
Yeah, you do.
No, I really don't. I just want to maybe understand, too. Is it possible, because this driveway's so, I don't want to say big, could the water, if he does it correctly, like he said he's going to, could the water maybe actually be better flowing because of these curbs or other, what word were used before?
Berm?
Berm and other runoffs? Is it possible that it would actually help or not?
Well, I mean, I wasn't at the sidewalk, you were, so if you saw where his house was going to be placed...
Yeah.
If that's more on a hill, and he digs an area out and it becomes flat to build his house on, and he has proper, you know, gutters on the house and say, you know, some, some rain gardens to collect that water, he's not going to have any impact on additional runoff if he does it properly. And like he says, there's professionals that do this sort of work, and then he's also a builder. So he's more skilled and versed in, in these things than, than your average individual having a house built.
I got you. I don't think so. Thank you.
Yep. I'll set.
Okay, I would make the motion that no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The next criteria is the granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment. There's obviously been great discussion around this. Again, I would just iterate, reiterate the comments I made about the sidewalk. I had problem finding water runoff coming down off the top of that hill, going down towards the berm, or even going down towards the driveway site. I would have thought with the lack of sunshine, the amount of rain, the amount of ground cover, leaves, that there would have been some indication of, like, a Vernal Pool or something that would lead me to believe that water wasn't, or was, just kind of running down the hill. And I just didn't see that. I mean, even the berm itself on the Leewood side towards the house was, was dry. So I'm kind of...I don't see how it's... Pardon? Yes, sir.
Did you not notice all the rock that was dumped on our property to mitigate the effects of the water coming down off of his driveway across my yard? And you didn't go down on my property and see the ditch that was dug by the water?
Did you ask us to?
No, we did not, because you were in such demand by these two.
You made the statement there that you were going to ask the questions, and we were not allowed to ask the questions.
But I think several times I did say, is there anything that anybody else would like us to know?
Yeah, I see.
I've already had to replace the topsoil over my septic system because of the runoff from the hill. And that was not with the house that he's going to build up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to...
No, not, no, I, we don't want to get into back and forth again.
But I did have a discussion with her. She took great notes...
Yes, she did.
About our property, because the time was getting all used up, and, and I wasn't going to drag you down there, but, so, yeah, I mean, and it's, and nothing has been his fault because he didn't live there, obviously.
Can I just say one thing?
No, no.
Okay.
I just want to say for the, for the record and the public, at the sidewalk, the chair said multiple times, at the end of the meeting, does anyone need anything else? Do you want us to show us anything? That's why we're here. That's why we take time away from our families to come and look at this stuff. So to say now that we didn't see it is unacceptable, in my personal opinion.
You can see all the rock they had dumped there in my backyard.
And then, like I said, the chair said multiple times that, is it, do you want to show us anything else? Do you want to show us any, anything, any more concerns? And no one said anything.
Okay, our bad, that's fine, our bad. We were just trying to be polite, but all, all, all else that was going on.
Did I make a motion for...is there a motion for letter E?
Well, Georgia Woodbury, I move that the granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley seconds it.
Any comments? All those in favor? I would make the motion that the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas as described in Title 8, Title 38, Section 435. That's correct, Tammy?
Correct.
Thank you. All those in agreement?
Oh, I second the motion.
Unanimous. Is everybody okay with that gray area below?
I am, and especially since Tammy said the house can be built no matter what.
Okay.
It's just a driveway.
I would make the motion that having met the criteria established for a practical difficulty variance, I motion granting Michael J. Lewis a practical difficulty from Gray Street Ordinance standards to reduce the required 10-foot setback to zero feet for installing a driveway accessing the rear of his parcel at 34 Arundel Road, Gray Main, Gray Tax Map 024312037000 in a Lake District zoning. And Michael J. Lewis implement water diversion or drainage methods in his driveway to prevent the unrestricted flow of water onto Arundel Road. Is there a second?
I second.
Anthony. Any comments from the general public? Any discussion from the board?
I just want to confirm with Tammy that if we grant this or not, a house can be built. Just want to confirm, make sure I wasn't hearing things incorrectly.
Yeah, correctly. Whether this driveway is built or not, he, under the current laws and the current zoning laws, he has enough land and setbacks to support a second dwelling unit in this location, which is what he is proposed to do. It's also important that when you look at that driveway going up in, that's a U. He's at a, it's, it's a pretty small area that he needs this variance for, because as he, when you look at the pinch point, as he moves further and further away from that pinch point on each side, he could actually meet the required setback. So it's a pretty small window that he's actually looking for, for a variance from this board. Because as he goes further and further away, he actually starts to meet it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not for the entire driveway that he's doing up back.
Thank you. I would like to amend my motion to add, and this is the last, the last portion, Inga, that Michael J. Lewis will implement industrially accepted water diversion or drainage methods in his driveway to prevent the unrestricted flow of water onto Arundel Road. In other words, I'm adding the term industrially accepted.
They would be BMPs, best management practices, per DEP, if, if we wanted to...
Okay, I want, okay, that, that's good language. I would like to include that language to implement DEP best...
BMPs, best management practices.
Best management practices.
Yeah, soil erosion control.
Soil erosion control.
Yeah, I would suggest, rather than, rather than saying industrial...
Well, we're going to use the language you just suggested.
Yeah, I would suggest saying something that, you know, to be installed with best management practices and, you know, something along the lines of the, you know, and acceptable methods from the Stormwater Erosion and Control Guidance Manual. Because there are manuals out there that are provided by the DEP for BMP, you know, we call them BMPs, best management practices. So, you know, like, when he goes to build this, if he was near a stream, I'd go out there and I'd say, all right, you need to put, you know, silt fencing or, or berms of, of mulch to prevent the runoff from going into the stream. So there's manuals that show you examples of what to do. So as long as you can just kind of capture it in a, because there's probably a thousand different ways he could do it. So as long as it's just captured in that, you know, that looser language, we'll make sure that he does it when he goes to do this.
Okay, that being said, Inga, if you can, can you read back what we, that, that last part of the motion, anyway?
There was a lot of talk, but what I'm seeing is Michael J. Lewis will implement DEP best managing, best management practices in soil and erosion control in his driveway to prevent the unrestricted flow of water onto Arundel Road.
Good. Does anybody understand that?
Well...
Is there a second to the amended motion?
Yeah, I would just say to...
Anthony Grabas seconds the amended motion.
Yep, I got that.
Any other discussion?
I would just have her add in that statement with the installation of the driveway.
Okay.
Just add that one word. Thank you.
You okay with that?
Yep.
I'm okay with that. So amended motion by Fogg, seconded by Grabas. Any other discussion? Mrs. Froder.
Oh, sorry, I think I might talk a bit, you know, because he's already took the rocks on my property there, that's my property. I like another rock back, the boulder back, but also that's a little bit narrow for the driveway.
Okay, Mrs. Froder.
Yes.
We can't do anything about the allegations that bowlers have been moved or stolen or misplaced, and we are requiring the applicant to install environmentally safe, acceptable water drainage, so to divert water from going down onto the road and proper drainage along that driveway. Any other concerns that you have, as I mentioned earlier, would be civil concerns and...yes, ma'am?
I just have a question. Since we have private roads and we all contribute to the maintenance of those, so the Road Association, it was the expenditure of the entire Road Association, our whole community that tried to mitigate the situation with those rocks. So, Mr. Lewis, you have said that you are, you are promising to work with the Road Association so that there won't be an emergency situation like that again?
I've approached the Road Association.
Folks, just, let's, let's, I need to put a stop to it right for a moment, anyway. First of all, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. Now, by this motion, Mr. Lewis has to implement, has to implement the DEP best management practices for water control, if you will. We've written that right into our decision. For the diversion and drainage methods in his driveway to prevent the unrestricted flow of water onto Arundel Road, that's specifically in the motion. So he has to take steps when he's doing this to prevent an unrestricted flow. In other words, the water just can't flow right down his driveway and out into the street and across the road. He has to put in some type of drainage management to prevent that from happening. Anything else in terms of the Homeowners Association or the Road Association that's, again, outside of our, our purview? We, we just can't tell the Homeowners Association or any members of it what they have to do above and beyond what we've already done. Build your driveway, but make sure that you have, just not flood the street. Can't flood the street. So again, anything else above and beyond that really is between the Homeowners Association and one of its members, if, if he's a member.
He's being supervised, to make sure he's doing that.
I would imagine that somewhere along the line, the code enforcement officer may be involved or, I mean, because he, he's going to have to provide the evidence that he's done this according to the motion and the variance. Because the variance will be recorded in the Common County Registry of Deeds, right?
Correct.
And by there, it has to be maintained and completed as we've stipulated.
Correct. And there's, there are multiple inspections that, required inspections that occur during the process. And so, and we can, you know, and he can show me, I'll go over a stormwater management plan and see what he plans to do. But basically, what he needs to do in order to comply with the language and the variance is going to have a zero impact going forward on any of the existing conditions if he follows the, the proper stuff, which he's more than willing to do. So I'll work with him to make sure that that happens.
And at some future meeting, we will probably ask a follow-up question, is how's it going? Well, that, that way we stay on top of it and...
Yeah, I'll come back.
Well...
I'll approach the bench.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
Just the minutes were lost.
Old business. We have approval of the minutes that were completed on May, April 23rd. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 23rd?
You didn't tell him about getting his permit, his variance.
And I will advise you that sometime within the next seven days, the Code Enforcement Office will write, have the decision written and signed, and you'll be able to pick it up probably next Thursday. have the decision written and signed, and you'll be able to pick it up probably next Thursday at, at the earliest.
Thank you.
So within seven, within seven days, I'll sign it, and then that makes it official, and it's yours. You can either pick it up or they can mail it to you, whichever you prefer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 23rd? Derek Shirley motions, is there a second? Anthony Grabas, we're gonna give it to Anthony.
Okay, give it to Anthony.
All those in favor? That's approved. Is there any other business before the zoning board tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Derek Shirley.
Is there a second?
Second.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.